10:34, and I'm going to call the meeting to order. And we always start with that pledge of allegiance. So if you'll rise and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the next on the agenda is acceptance of minutes from October 13th. I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to accept the minutes as written.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Committee reports, housing partnership, there is none. That's all set. And I just want to say happy anniversary to my husband tomorrow. Anyone else have any public announcements that they want to share?
No.
With the beautiful town and nothing to do with it? Nope. All right, we're going to go on to our continued public hearing, which is Main Street, 146 Main Street.
Thank you.
We ended last meeting by basically asking the question what authority the board has to make a decision. And I think in order to understand that, we need to look what happened, where we're at, and looking at the law that gives you the authority to make some decisions that would basically help resolve the situation. The two main issues that we have...
Excuse me for a moment. We went over the facts pretty completely last time. Could we stick to the authority question, which is a legal question, I think? So if you've got statute, regulation, bylaw, whatever it is, that's what I'm most interested in.
Well, I'm wondering, we had technical issues because I wasn't prepared with that old computer. In fact, I have a new computer to do the slide presentation.
Does that change the legal authority question?
It helps.
How?
Because it adds certain factual background. Because one of the issues that you posed last time is that your authority is over more or less the building inspector versus the Board of Health. And there are issues and permits that were issued by the building inspector and issues of enforcement that have been requested from the building inspector since 2005 that haven't been complied with. And now we're basically looking at both the structure that's out of compliance, which according to the law, the building code of Massachusetts, no permit should have been issued if there are violations of zoning, wastewater issues, things like that. Not to mention even the basic permits that were pulled on this pump station were not followed from the building perspective.
And what year were these permits pulled?
The original, the permit for the structure itself, the pump shed, was pulled in 2005.
So you're asking us to want something that's 10 years old?
We're asking you to have, to, we're looking for enforcement, basically for the building inspector to make a decision enforcing a violation of the code at present, because there are still violations on the premises itself, the building, which was not actually constructed according to code.
Let me ask you a question. Hasn't the building inspector already arbitrated an agreement between the parties?
No, he has not.
The Commonwealth of Mass has.
No, they have not.
You're still in litigation.
Well, okay.
Mr. Brown, excuse me. Mr. Brown, have you arbitrated, okay, okay, has there been a mutual agreement of the minds in this between the couple of parties?
I've been advised by town council that we have no comment because this was adjudicated a long time ago, well beyond 10 years ago, and it's since ongoing. He's not satisfied, and he wants to keep dredging up stuff that I, we have no jurisdiction. The court does, and the arbitrator does. I suggest that they go back there, and I believe I have a statement in the packet that tells them that.
Okay, and he did issue...
So why are you wasting our time?
It's not, no, it's not so much wasting our time. It's everyone has, we're doing due diligence. Everyone has the right to be heard, so, and this is the process that we're going through right now.
Right.
And it's for us to decide if it's heard correctly.
If sewage pumping station...
Correct.
...comes under the umbrella of the zoning board?
The enforcement of the building inspector does come under the realm of the zoning board.
I understand.
And that's what they, they have to, it's their responsibility to present to us that...
There have been permits pulled on that building since...
I think before we see any of that, we just want to know the right of what we do as a board. You said you were going to present us with law, case law that...
Yes, not case law. It's the Chapter 48 basically states that under Section 14, you have the right to, basically to review appeals of our request for enforcement under Section 8, or subsection 8 of Chapter 48.
Do we have a copy of that? Did you submit that copy to us?
You know, at the time, I did not have that, no.
At the time, how about in the month since the last meeting? Have you been able to submit that to the board? Which I think, which I, as I recall, was kind of the ask of the parties.
Well, we do have copies of it, and no, I did not submit it to the board.
I actually have the minutes here, and it's, we specifically asked for you to present us with...
Section 8 is not on the slide presentation.
I mean, you're citing, you're citing Mass law, which...
But Section 7, Section 7 is actually on the presentation that I did submit, and that also includes the authority of the building inspector, which you have oversight over.
And that is where? In your packet that you submitted yet?
It is in the packet. As I, I tried to, it's a, it's a last slide, which I don't think you can read.
No, we can't. I cannot read the slides.
Which is why I brought a larger version of it.
Okay, let's see that slide then. Counselor, see, the goal of the board is to kind of be prepared for these hearings the same way that you're prepared, because nobody wants to waste our respective times. So I would, I would have read this a long time ago had it been submitted.
Thank you, ma'am.
I mean, we, that's why we do have a timeline of when information needs to be submitted, because as a board, we do like to be prepared. We don't like to waste your time, as, we don't want our time being wasted, as well as the people out there.
I understand that. I also know that I am not going to go into the background of preparing the presentation or basically deciding whether or not to show up. However, we have put in time to prepare the law, as well as a history and the condition of the building itself that was never inspected despite request to have it inspected. And really, if you want to fast forward in a nutshell, what we're looking for is decision tonight, okay? Either rejection from the board, or basically a decision by the building inspector to condemn it, basically because there are many officials, there are many people who agree that this structure is out of code. You know, from the DEP who I've spoken to, from Director Eric Cifore, who's the Director of Community and Economic Development. And all we're asking, you know, initially in 2012, when I contacted Mr. Brown, is I want it inspected. And he even agreed to it. Then after a call from Sutton Pond's attorney, we suddenly heard that he was not going to inspect.
Did you want to say why you feel that Section 7 pertains to us in this case?
It basically shows the powers of the building inspector, what he can and cannot do in the inspection process. And basically, you oversee him, and he has a duty to inspect and make sure that all the structures that are built under his auspices in this town are up to code.
Can, can you, since this has just been presented to us, and I've been extraordinarily distracted by conversation and don't want to take a recess just so that I can read this thing, could you perhaps pull it up on the, on the big screen there and then, and then walk me through the, specifically, can you show me the three or four phrases or the entire section on which you rely? Because in my mind, a threshold question is whether or not the board has authority, and if we do have authority and it's in this 40A, Section 7, then I think I'm happy to get into kind of the meatier elements of the issue.
Okay, I highlight it, and unfortunately, I cannot read it from here. Do you have a copy of it? It's basically the first paragraph. Okay, "The inspector shall be charged with the enforcement of the zoning ordinance or bylaw and shall withhold a permit for construction, alteration, or moving of any building structure if the building or structure as constructed, altered, or moved would be in violation of any zoning ordinance or bylaw, and no permit or license shall be granted for new use of a building, structure, or land which, which use would be in violation of any zoning ordinance or bylaw." Okay, he basically granted a permit in 2005, when this particular structure was in violation of a special use permit back in 2000, which was issued back in 1992. In addition, the permit that was issued called for a specific manner in which this building was to be constructed, and there was no after inspection, there was no affidavit filed with the town to make sure that the construction of this building complied with the code or even the permit in which the drawings were issued.
And, and we're focusing on, when you say the word building, you're referring to the system or the shed?
The pump shed.
The shed, it's, the shed is the issue.
The shed itself. But he knew that it was, it even said on the, on the building permit that it was for a pump shed. Not just a shed, but a pump shed.
Which is strictly to shelter, what, the mechanics of the pump itself? It's really not a property where somebody's going to live in. It's just a building.
Well, no, not as though... Because there's certain requirements under the code that require certain ventilation rules, as well as certain electrical rules. Because at the time that this was constructed...
In 2005.
In 2005.
And now you want us to report this in 2015.
And, well, it's still a present situation, okay? It, it's like, in, in the slides that I would show you, the holes to the wet well are basically plugged with rags, okay? There's gases ventilating into that system. Right now, the only main difference when it comes to the gases is that the pump chamber itself is ventilated, okay? Is ventilated through the roof. But really, there are rags, it, it's, there's no ventilation, okay? So there's an explosion hazard.
So, so let me ask you something. What's your bottom line? You, you want someone else to pay the bill?
No. That, let's, that's between us and Sutton Pond, quite frankly.
Okay, so, yeah, so why are you here arguing?
My point is, we want a determination by the town, basically the ZBA, to either enforce the code or reject our appeal, okay? So either Mr. Brown condemns the building, which is fine, or the board itself refuses to rule and denies our appeal.
Who owns the shed again?
Who owns it?
Yes.
Sutton Pond owns the shed. It's on, it's largely on Sutton Pond property. The shed is actually attached to my client's building, and as you can see at the base, on the right, top right of the picture, that's the bottom of my client's foundation, which is porous. When this pump system fails and freezes and effluent flows all over the place, as you can see in the picture, it flows into my client's foundation because it's rubble. It also flows outside into the wetlands because underneath is basically gravel, crushed stone. There's really no way to keep this, the effluent from any flooding inside the pump station itself.
If we reject the appeal, what happens next?
Well, then that's for us to consider.
What, to consider what?
Well, that's between me and my client, quite frankly. We haven't decided what we would do, but that's matter of attorney-client privilege.
And if we accept the appeal, what happens?
Well, depends what you instruct the building inspector to do.
Who has already negotiated a settlement?
He's never negotiated, that was the arbitrator. He was never involved in the settlement.
Excuse me, okay, then, an arbitrator's already ruled on this.
The arbitrator has said now...
And the building inspector's going on the knowledge of the arbitrator.
And town council.
And town council.
I, I would say on town council because the arbitrator never addressed the specific requirements of a pump shed.
Why wasn't that presented at that time?
Excuse me?
Why wasn't those arguments presented at that time?
They were.
So if they were, and the arbitrator ruled, then he heard all the information?
Well, the arbitrator, and we gave a copy of the arbitration award for the last meeting, and the award basically stated that the shed and the system would be constructed in a certain manner according to the code, okay? The arbitrator didn't say what type of siding to use, what type of lumber to use, okay? The arbitrator referred to the code. The enforcer of the code in your town is Mr. Brown.
I have a question. Why did you present to us a police report in your packet?
That was one way to get certain officials from the town to inspect, to take a look at the pump system.
By acting unreally?
No, we never acted unreally.
Because I read the report, it was an incident report against the client.
Yes. He basically showed up, Ms. Sawyer called the police, feeling that he was threatening, and all he was saying is he was going to threaten to sue. And so in order to have a peaceful resolution, the, my understanding in talking to the police officer, is that the police officer arranged for the members of the town, Ms. Sawyer and Mr. Brown, to come and inspect the pump system.
I don't think the police officer has that authorization, so I think they were acting good faith by coming out there. I don't think they have.
I'm not saying one way or the other. I'm just...
I was just curious.
Closing that in there, okay? These are the lengths that my client has taken to try and get the town to take a serious look at this station.
Now, I, I mean, I, as an outsider looking in, I see two people who cannot come to an agreement. I'm reading the other report of, 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 Van de Linden, how you locked the shed and they can't get in, regardless of the issues of bad blood or whatever's between you guys. Me and myself, I honestly don't think that this is the right forum for you to be in. I still think you need to go back to Commonwealth of Mass and go to the arbitration and continue on there, because they, they haven't acted in, both of you, they haven't acted and done what you needed to do. So, I mean, that's my opinion. I don't think Section 7 does apply here.
Okay, so basically what you're saying is that any civil judgment or any civil action negates the town's duty to oversee the construction?
No, you put words in my mouth.
That's what essentially you're telling us.
That's not what I said.
Okay. Then how can you translate the arbitrator's award into what you see in front of you?
It's my interpretation of what's in front of me, as is yours, as is everyone else in the board. It's an interpretation of the evidence that's presented to me.
See, I would say the problem with last month's is everybody was tired and it was late, and quite frankly, I did not get a full chance to present. Mr. Van der Linden was not interrupted as I was, but with that said, he has a perspective that's given to him solely by his client. Yes, my client did lock it up because people were working on it without requesting, you know, they were affecting his systems. They were working on the electrical, they were working on the plumbing without notifying my client. He basically said you can have access if you give me a call, I'll let you in, just tell me what the scope of work that you're doing. And they refused to do that.
I think what you're interpreting in last meeting was my frustration, and I can't speak for everyone on the board, is having an unprepared presentation. That was my frustration, not that we were cutting you off, it was an unprepared, and not that we were tired, it was a presentation that wasn't put to, presented to this board properly. So, you know, I, I think, again, this is interpretation, how you saw it and how I perceive it is very different.
Okay, well, most of the materials that you have from the last meeting basically tell you the history, as well as the law with respect to where we got, other than your ability to make a ruling.
Okay.
And I will tell you the code sections, the chapters, and the verses that do give you the authority to basically hear an appeal for lack of enforcement by, by the building inspector.
I mean, you're, you're here because of Section 7, you're here appealing...
I'm here because of Section 7.
Correct.
I'm here because of Section 8. I'm here because of Section 14.
Section 48. Why don't you do the whole thing? You're here because of 48, so...
Yes.
Okay. Does anyone on the board have any, did you get a chance to read it, Paul, being the legal eye that you are?
Sure.
Okay. That's it? Sure. Did you read it? Do you have any comments on it, or any direction, or any questions? Okay. Anyone else on the board have any questions?
I just don't think Mr. Brown's here in front of us. I said, the arbitrator and town council's already made a decision. Who are we to overturn what they've already decided? It's as simple as that. Because he's not happy with what the arbitrator and town council has said. He, he's pursuing every avenue that he can't overturn it.
What I think it is, Alan, it's not that he's not happy with the, with the arbitrator. He's, he has a pump station that is disgusting, that is, you know...
Well, let him fix it.
Right, and that's, it's not an interpretation of that. It's not that, okay. I mean, it, it also is that they can't agree, they both can't agree to something.
Let me ask you something.
Yes.
We shut down the pump station, and you evacuate the people because they can't live there.
It's not a residential unit. It's an office building.
Does the service a business? What does the service?
The service, the building...
We shut down the pump station. What, what do we close? What, what gets closed?
You condemn it.
Okay, so who is affected by the condemnation?
Obviously, my client is.
Okay, in addition, but your client, and who's renting your client's building? Give us a direct answer.
Right now, my client is renting his own building. He may have one tenant.
I have a client. I have, there's two tenants in there, myself and another engineering firm.
Okay, but...
So you would be unable to inhabit your own building, and the tenant paying you rent would be unable to inhabit your building?
And we are, we're prepared to deal with that, okay? My point is, is that the town...
There's a lot of double talk here.
No, there's no double talk.
It certainly sounds like it to me.
Can I?
I'm putting words in your mouth, all right? But let's get down to basic answers here.
Talk about, he said that we, we should repair it. We should tell him what happened when we tried to repair it.
Well, yeah, I mean, you basically...
So you condemn it. He can't go to work if the tenant can't go to work, right?
For the time being, until it's dealt with, yes.
Okay, so if he can't go to work and the tenant can't go to work, is it just going to sit there and no one's going to fix it?
No, what he's asking us to do is...
No, 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 I wonder who's going to fix it?
Well, you know, that's a good question, because we're not allowed to fix it. We tried to do it several years ago, and...
You're not allowed to fix it?
No, they would not let us fix it.
It's not our property.
They basic, it's not on our property. It's not our pump system.
So who would you squat to?
That is something that we would deal with, with Sutton Pond, but that would not involve the town, okay? Our point here is a very narrow issue. It's to ask the town to enforce its own, basically the law, the building code, as well as its own bylaws.
I'm going to go back to, an arbitrator and town council have already adjudicated this thing, correct?
I don't know what town council has said, other than what Mr. Brown conveyed to me, okay?
I have it in writing, sir.
Right, and then he sent it in a letter. However, with respect to the arbitrator, the arbitrator specifically said what law applies. The arbitrator did not specifically say how to build the pump station.
Me personally, I am not going to go against the arbitrator of the town council, who have heard all the facts.
Okay.
It's as simple as that.
Any decision that you make would not go against the arbitrator.
Oh, no?
Okay, no. The decision that you make may go against town council, because other than what Mr. Brown sent me in a letter, I don't know what town council said.
Then I'm not going against town council then.
All right, well, with that clarity, let me move on, since your mind is made up. Let me see if I can explore a little bit more. Counselor, not highlighted in section, or Chapter 48, Section 7, you know, down at the bottom half of it talks about a, looks like there's a 10-year, again, I'm just glancing at this now, so I'm not nearly as fluent in the, in the chapter as you are. This, it looks like there's a 10-year statute of limitations. Is, is that not applicable in this case?
Well, considering that, with respect to the enforcement issue, no, because we've been trying to get Mr. Brown to come back and inspect and take some action since at least 2012. This building was actually constructed 2005, December, but it wasn't fully retrofitted until the following year in either May or June. So if you use the 10-year statute, it's still within the statute, but even then, there were disagreements going back and forth between my client and Sutton Pond until this thing, basically, I believe this is either 2012 or 2007, but the same thing happened over and over again due to a freeze, or in 2012 was the pump failure. They came in, Sutton Pond came in, they added the pumps, the control system, the alarm, which in and of itself violates the code, and then Sutton Pond said it was done. And that's when I contacted Mr. Brown and said, could you please inspect? And he said yes. Okay, so I would still say that the statute still hasn't run.
Madam Chair, if you look at the documentation that's presented from Van Linden, Attorneys in Law, this goes back to 2002, when they were requested, at the time was the building commissioner, Mr. Robert Nacetta. And it was also denied at that time to do action on this. And subsequently, they went to an arbitrator in 2005. So where does that bring me, being accused of not inspecting, issuing permits I had nothing to do with, and arrested this goobly-gunk that you two conjure up and try to win yourselves peace? I don't get it. Go back to court. The town council has requested that you do that. And, and telling me that I didn't go and inspect that property, sir, is an injustice, and you're an attorney, and you can say that under oath, that I didn't refuse to go there. And he knows, and I've got the health, the health department, and Susan Sawyer, and her, her counterpart, all three of us went there, and Mr., what's his name here, was there. So, and, and, Mr. Smith, whatever his name is, and where does he get off saying this kind of stuff? He's yelling and screaming at the health department in my office. He was, he was, had to be arrested by the police department. There's a lot of stuff here. You guys have been carrying on for a long time, so...
I get you, Pat.
I get it.
Okay, I know you weren't arrested. Yes, my client was not arrested.
Nope. No, and you actually presented the...
The police report.
The police report.
My...
The incident, incident. It wasn't a police, it was an incident.
Yes.
Referred to as an incident. Let me clarify that. Does anyone on the board have any other questions? Danny?
I make a motion to close the hearing.
We're not done yet.
I don't know if, do you have anything else to present to, to the board to...
Well, I have more slides, which I gave to you.
More slides of the pump station? Is it anything different that you presented last month?
Yes, there's actually a letter showing that there were no permits pulled from the town. There was a letter from Mr. Lincoln Daly citing that, what the procedures are to get something built in the town, if there's already a design plan filed, which there was. There are renderings on what, where all this originated from, where the pump station whole situation started, and that miraculously, without, I would say, anybody really knowing about it, that this particular pump station appeared, you already have the arbitrator's rulings, which define what needed to be built. But, you know, and it goes back to what the law is. And when you say, what is the law, what are we going to do? The arbitrator knows the law. He basically stated, this is what needs to be built. Yes, there may be some issues in the arbitration award that we disagree with, but it is a binding arbitration which we have to abide by. But it doesn't abdicate the town's police powers to have something that is appropriate and safe constructed in conjunction with a building inspector, okay? And without filing anything, you know, designing anything, unlike their own pump system that Sutton Pond has, you know, all they did was basically put Band-Aid after Band-Aid on this thing, okay? And there's never any following of any of the design. There was never a following of any of the code. They just slopped it together. I mean, you have wet rags basically plugging up the pump system, so if it loses power, it's going to overflow. Okay, the current vent, which is finally not in the actual pump system itself, it basically empties out to a second floor window. And we were, we were discussing with the town this past summer, it was all supposed to be temporary.
Counselor, one of the things that I struggle with, forgive me, I don't, I don't even know his name, but the, the attorney, Charles Vanderlinde, the attorney for Sutton Pond, provided in, among his materials, a report from Norfolk Ram, you know, that looks like they're engineers.
Yeah.
This is dated September 7, 2012, which indicates that, again, we're not talking about the pump house in this letter, we're talking about the pump systems. And I appreciate that there are two different issues here, and it sounded like we started the night, or it felt like you were directing the issue tonight as to the shed itself, but now we've kind of devolved into the pumping system.
Right.
And that's, I get confused myself when we start on, on one tangent and then move to the next. So if we're on the pump system, and I'm not certain that we should be, because that's So if we're on the pump system, and I'm not certain that we should be, because that's not where we started, but this 2012 letter states, I inspected the portions of the upgraded sewage pumping system that serves the granite building that have been completed on that date by United Compressor and Pump Services, Inc., and have had to have observed that the completed work conforms to the requirements of the pumping system installation outlined in the October 18, 2005 Award of Arbitrator, and the May 12, 2006 disposition of application for clarification award. I don't have any idea what that means, but it certainly sounds like this is a compliant pump system. It may not necessarily be what everybody wants, but it's, this, unless we have a battle of the experts somewhere that I'm not seeing, this is, this is indicating that the pump system is compliant with the arbitrator's award.
I, I submitted my packet and a copy of the STANTEC letter written by Victor Olson, who is a very respected engineer in this industry. We also subsequently hired Hancock and Associates. Both engineering firms clearly stated that this was out of compliance. In fact, Hancock evaluated around the same time or after that Norfolk Ram did. Norfolk Ram was the original engineers on, or the engineering firm on the project, but they never designed anything, okay? They may, he may make a statement that it's in compliance, but there's no engineering or design on this system that was ever passed with the town.
Can, can you point me to the STANTEC letter? I assume it's in your slideshow.
It is not. I actually gave it to you, my original documents, last month. It's a twenty-six page letter from Victor Olson. Now, in addition, not to interrupt you, this is my letter, which is slide number forty-six, that I sent to Director Kefory back in April. Basically, this was my confirm letter to him that stated that everybody agreed, other than Sutton Pond, that this system is out of compliance. The DEP agreed, the town agreed at that point, and obviously, we did. So regardless on what their engineer stated, the powers that be, even as of last month when I spoke to, or in September when I spoke to Kevin Brenner of the DEP, this system's out of compliance. And I'm talking about the whole entire system.
But it was in compliance after arbitration?
No, it was never in compliance. What you see is just a better iteration of what was there.
Did you find the letter?
Yeah, Denny handed it over.
It's in the findings, this packet?
I don't know where Denny found it.
Was it in here? From last month. When you were in arbitration, did you agree on an engineer to inspect it?
No, part of the, that was actually not from the, not part of the arbitration award. The original settlement said both parties would have a say, as in the design and construction of this. And Sutton Pond went ahead and hired Norfolk Ram Group, and they basically went ahead and built this without consulting my client. And I, I wouldn't even say went ahead and built it. What they did is they built a pump shed over the existing pump system that was never engineered, designed, and permitted. And then over time, since, I don't know, 2002, to, to, to the present, they basically kept on updating every time it failed.
So why are you not in front of the planning boards since they originally granted this?
What, what did the planning board grant?
The pump station, they, they were the whole, it states, I'm reading the bylaw, that, that...
You mean the special permit?
Yes.
That's a good question. They basically said they will not, this is for the appeals.
Judy Tymon said that?
Yeah.
Said this should be designed.
Did, um, did you have any questions? I'm leaning on you, legal.
I don't think so, Madam Chair.
Right.
What's that?
Is there anything else the board wants to hear? Is there anything else you want to present, or...
I'd like to present the slideshow, even if I can go through it fairly quickly.
Can you do it extremely quick?
I can do it.
And I'm gonna time you.
Okay.
And if you have computer difficulties, this time we can't see it.
This is a brand-new computer. I got it specially for this.
All right.
This is a super-duper computer. Okay, this is obviously the title page. This is basically one of the iterations of the project, which shows the original pump station, the factory, flowing sewage to the pump station that served both my client's building and the factory.
This is the original.
Sorry.
Let me go back. That was the factory. There's the original pump station, right here, and this is our building that exists here. That was pre-92.
Right. This is the pump station that was designed, permitted, engineered for Sutton Pond, okay? They did their own system, which was legal. It even has a DEP permit. All we asked was the same be done for our building.
The DEP permit required it.
Yeah, the DEP permit specifically required an engineered, designed system for my client's building. Okay, this is a later rendering that basically shows, again, the factory, the pump station that was to be raised, and the whole purpose of this slide is just to say that, and you can't read it too well, is that it was a pump shed, not just a shed, that would be This is a rendering, and this is actually the condo docks now, for my client's building just before the ground lease was issued, and as you can see, it's on all four sides, there's no pump station attached to my client's building.
This is where it exists right now, right against this window, and the vent stack comes up underneath that window.
Okay, this is, this diagram was made, or was filed with the Registry of Deeds in September of 1993. And again, it shows no pump system attached to my client's building, but one in the middle.
It's our building, right there.
And this is the building that you saw last month, and this is really, on the exterior, it's mostly the same, but there is a white pump, white pipe coming out of the roof, right underneath that window. And that's the ventilation for the wet well. This is an example of failure, which basically happened immediately when my client moved in. On the right, you see, the top right, there is a vent pipe that actually terminated within the building itself. So basically, all the sewer gases would go right into the building. And as you can see, when it's overflowing, and really, the basic design has stayed the same, this is a gravel base, so when it overflows, it leaks out. It doesn't stay within the pump system itself. In order to try and get this system working, because when my client moved in, the pumps pumped, but they didn't pump it to anywhere. So he was told to install a cleanout, which he did halfway between his building and Main Street. And this is ultimately where the pump system empties out, which contradicts the special permit. It goes 640 feet up an incline to North Main, or to Main Street at Second Street.
This is Second Street, this is Main Street, and there's a manhole where that man's standing.
This is the manhole, and when they finally pulled out the, the plaster material that covered the concrete plug, they found a hydraulic cement plugging the sewer, the sewer line.
This is the sewer pipe, right there, you can see that round circle.
And this is after my client's contractor pulled out 12 inches of hydraulic cement to unplug it. And this is another angle, it's a four-inch pipe. And again, the important part about this is the four-inch main was designed for the use of the factory building as well as my client's building. So it's...
1901.
Yeah, 1901. This pipe is actually dated 1901. After the plug was removed and the system was turned on, sewage started flowing. And just here's another angle of that. This again is another picture, it predates what we're dealing with now, but if you can take a look on the left side, where the coupling pipe is, that, that lower portion still exists. And that coupling is basically one of the areas that's leaking right now as we speak. Also, that is the vent that vented right into the pump shed itself. And there's a heater that's not rated for a pump system right there, so it could have ignited the gases. And you can see, when the system overflows, there's moisture around where the pumps open And again, this is the system when it's taken apart, and the, and basically, there's a small wet well that fills up really quickly. It's only 200 gallons. And again, this is an example of, in failure. As you can see, there are multiple homes and holes in the pump, in the wet well chamber itself that overflow onto the crushed stone.
This is 2007.
And again, this is an example of how Sutton Pond patched it together.
Rubber band.
Yeah, with straps, we call it rubber bands, but basically, at that point, they'd cut off one of the pumps when it stopped working and only installed a single pump. They took out the control systems, they took out the alarms. So if the pump failed, you would not know that it's overflowing until you walk into the pump shed or smell it. And this is what happened when it failed. And again, that's another angle. And as you can see on the right side, my client's foundation, this effluent flows into his This is basically when it froze, this, earlier this year.
January.
In January, okay? There have been many accusations on how it froze, but basically, the door was closed, it wasn't properly insulated and heated, and it just froze under the cold weather.
Well, it's been insulated.
And bas, and this is an example in 2012 when they repaired it, and I'm not exactly sure what the electrical inspector advised them to do, but they installed a wooden floor. However, the wooden floor prevented them from accessing the pumps themselves to service them. And in order to service them this time, they had to rip up the floor. And as you can see...
Two years it's never been serviced.
Yeah, it hadn't been serviced for a number of years, but you can see the indications of it flooding underneath the floor. And this is just another angle, and this is what the freeze did to improperly constructed and heated, or at least insulated, system. This is the shed as it stands now. This is, this was taken probably around the winter, around the time of the freeze. It got a little warmer, a lot of the moisture is probably the effluent seeping out. You'll see at the bottom of the shed, there are these green boards, but they're basically sleepers. There's nothing underneath them. There's no foundation, there's no freeze barrier, there's nothing. This is also an example that the shed itself is built not adjacent, but attached to my client's building, his, his foundation. In certain sections, the contractor basically used a silicone caulk to attach the flashing to stone that's covered with moss. Now, the original permit to construct the shed called for two-by-six rafters, built 16 inches on center. And as you can see, I'm not a construction expert, but this does not look like two-by-six constructions. Two-by-four construction is definitely not 16-inch on center. This is basically where the pump shed is attached to the building, to my client's foundation. And because of the way it's attached, the moisture builds up and it's rotting where it's connected. This is what's present, and originally, when this was replaced back in April of this year, it was agreed upon that this would be temporary. However, Sutton Pond says it's permanent. However, I'm not too sure any engineer would approve this design or this implementation because you have rags plugging up holes where there should be something more substantial.
Right.
And that's the vent pipe that basically goes up through the roof out to the second door, second floor window. Oh, also, according to the code, in order to make a repair of a system like this, it has to be permitted, the repair has to be permitted, and they have to pressure test it before they turn it online. Had they done that, they may have seen that there's a leak right there where the red dot is. That's basically where it's leaking before. The town has refused to condemn this, not citing that it is not a hazardous condition. However, this is one of Sutton Pond's workers, and as you can see, he's wearing hazmat equipment. And this is where the roof line meets my client's foundation, and again, you can see the clear caulk on the, on the moss. And again, this shows more mold, which is a hazardous issue, and rot from it being connected where it is. And this is more rot from the moisture and how it was built, and the fact that there was no foundation. This is present day. As you can see, there's moisture pooling around where the rag is, as well as in sort of a semicircle around the coupling to the left, where there's a white ring. In the video that I showed you last time, that's where it was spewing out.
Right here.
And again, this is more pictures of the pump shed, mold, rot. This was the insulation pulled out of the pump system. Basically, it was saturated with human waste. And again, Sutton Pond's person who pulled out the insulation wearing hazmat mask. This is basically the crushed stone in front of the sewer system. And again, when it leaks, it goes everywhere. And you can also see that it's attached to my client's building, and there's the pipe that goes up, the vent pipe. This is more of the insulation, and then this is the letter, basically saying that there were no permits for the pump system as of 2000. Okay, this was the original shed permit that was pulled, that was eventually, there was a cease and desist order because Sutton Pond's person, Mr. Dykman, pulled it, saying he was the owner, and he never had my client authorize it. This is the electrical permit that was pulled in 2006, and eventually, the work, I believe, was done later that year. This was the letter from Mr. Daly, which I've given you a copy of, that basically states the procedures to modify the site plan. And none of those modified, none of those procedures were followed. And finally, and this is the letter that I pointed out to you earlier, that I sent to Mr. Kefory, documenting his position that this system was out of code. And then that's the code section. Would you like to see the videos again?
No, good.
They are juicy, as they say.
I enjoyed your new computer. Does anyone else on the board have any questions, or are we all set?
I'm, I'm all set, Madam Chair.
Okay.
See, understanding and closing, okay? Right now, it doesn't necessarily look like this, but whenever the tank starts pumping, effluent is spewing out of a coupling, okay? We're in a situation, we're damned if we do, we're damned if we don't. We can't, we can't redo it ourselves, okay? No one's gonna condemn it, at least not right now, and if we shut it off, then, you know, it's supposedly our fault, even though it's spewing out effluent.
Counselor, and, and just kind of, in probing, I guess, a little bit, and I'm sure that you covered it either last time, and probably this time as well, but nonetheless, some, many things don't stick with me, is you said we're damned if we do and we're damned if we don't, we can't, we can't fix it ourselves and they won't fix it. I guess my simple question, it's clear that they won't fix it. I'm crystal clear on that one. By the they, I mean Sutton Pond.
Right.
So what's the, what, again, reminds me, I'm sorry to put you through this, reminds me, what prevents your client from fixing it?
We have no, this is not our pump station. It's not on our land. We've tried, they prevented us. We tried...
I'm crystal clear on that one. By the "they," I mean Sutton Pond.
Right.
So what's the, what... Again, remind me, I'm, I'm sorry to put you through this. Remind me, what prevents your client from fixing it?
We have no, this is not our pump station. It's not on our land. We've tried, they prevented us. We tried to pull permits, they prevented us. So we're not going to do anything to this without being, without being able to pull a permit.
So if they have prevented you...
Yes.
Why don't they fix it?
They won't.
Because they say that it's our problem, yet they don't let us fix it the way it's supposed to be fixed.
So this sounds like a dog chasing its tail now.
Well...
Right? This sounds like a, he's saying that they won't let, he won't, Sutton Pond won't let him fix it. But Sutton Pond says it's not their responsibility.
Correct.
Doesn't make sense to me.
I agree, it doesn't.
Doesn't make sense.
I agree, it doesn't make sense, but in 2010...
And I don't see where this falls under, we as the appeal board is the Supreme Court of the sewer pumping stations of Massachusetts.
Not of Massachusetts, just North Andover.
Oh, excuse me, of North Andover.
But see, that's where I narrowed the question, the, the issue. Basically, a special permit, which barring any advice from Town Council, you have the authority to, to enforce, as well as our repeated demands for enforcement, to the building inspector for enforcement, which you have the authority to.
The way I see it, it's already been done. The way I see it, it's already been done.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Do you have any other land in your, for your houses to build your own pumping station?
You mean the building?
Yes.
The actual land, it's, it's a land lease. My client technically only owns the building, and a different entity owns the land, but the land really is the size of the building itself.
Okay.
Maybe 18 inches outside of the foundation, and that's about it.
So you have, if you, you said, you know what, I'm going to just go do my own.
Can't do it. Not outside, not according to the code.
Okay.
And then, this may, may not necessarily be germane, but nonetheless, it's something that I'm stuck on. So if Sutton Pond, I thought I read somewhere, and again, forgive me and all the materials, I thought I read somewhere that Sutton Pond sent a letter that said, "It's yours now, baby." You know, "You, you take care of it." So they, so they've, they've sent you that letter, and yet, what I think I've also heard is that they've said, "It's yours, baby, but we're not going to let you fix it." Is, is that accurate?
Basically, yes. Maybe on a different time periods, yes. In 2010...
Never mind different, how about today? Not the different time period. Let's talk today.
We don't have any, any rights to go on their land to pull a permit. Okay? We've tried that.
But you said that they won't allow you to fix it.
They will not allow us to do what's proper, to pull a permit. And that's fixing it.
Somebody's kidding somebody here. It doesn't make sense here. Somebody's trying to pull the wool over somebody's eyes by double talk, triple talk. Okay? It, it doesn't make sense what you just said. He wants to fix it, they won't allow it, but they won't fix it.
Correct.
All right. I only went to Lawrence High School.
It's like...
Anyway, I'm not that smart. I don't understand this. Come on, come on. This is crazy. You're wasting everyone's time now. Honest to God, you're wasting everyone's time. I want a closer hearing, let's end this. There's people out here who've waited all night. It's 8:30, let's get on with their business. Okay?
With all due respect, Alan, the applicant's not wasting my time.
Well, um...
I know, I know that you made up your mind already. You've stated that for the record.
Absolutely, I have.
So as far as I'm concerned, you don't need to interfere anymore, since we know what your vote is.
You seem to agree with me, I can't believe it.
Well, I'm, I'm struggling with the same thing that everybody, everybody else is, and we only have two sources of information. One is the applicant and the other is Sutton Pond. And currently, we have the applicant before us, so I'm going to ask them questions. Now, it's regrettable if that wastes your time or somebody else's time on the board. Unfortunately, we all volunteered and got appointed for this nonsense, so we're stuck here together. So what prevents, I, I, I mean, I hear you. Sutton Pond doesn't want, it sounds like Sutton, yours, what you're telling me is Sutton Pond doesn't want to cooperate, but we want to fix it. What prevents you and your client from going back to, again, back to the startup, forgive me for, for raising Alan's point again, from going back to the arbitrator and say, "Hey, foul, Mr. Arbitrator." I, no, don't get me wrong, I get what you're doing here, that you're saying that the arbitrator does not make the town of North Andover advocate its police enforcement powers. I totally 100% get that, and I'm sympathetic to the, to the argument. Nonetheless, as a practical matter, is there anything that prevents you from saying, "Hey, Mr. Arbitrator, bad actor's over here, straighten him out?"
He basically said, "Don't come back." But, I mean, literally, he gave two, either one or two clarifications, and he said, and that's it. So in order to deal with this, we basically would have to go back into litigation and go back to either binding arbitration or get an order from the court.
And where, where I struggle is even if, assume, assume that the board approves, or, you know, approves whatever it is that you're asking for, and quite frankly, I still don't have the language for it, but I'm, I know it'll be right into the record.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
If, assuming that the board, it gives you what you need tonight.
Right.
I guess. And again, kind of echoing Alan's question, you know, kind of, what happens next? So the zoning board says, "Hey, Mr. Building Inspector, we disagree with your findings from, you know, over the past 10 years," or whatever the, the period is. And then, so now, what happens? If Sutton Pond, I mean, we're, we're stuck in a limbo here. Sutton Pond says, "It's yours." You say, "It's Pond's." And now, we're still back in front of somebody else that's going to say, "Hey, you got to fix it, Mr. Smith, or you've got to fix it Sutton Pond." I don't, that's not necessarily us, I don't think.
Correct. It's not you. It's, it's basically the building inspector and the other, I guess, enforcement branches of the town that would say, "Now enforcement orders come out." And basically, if we get enforcement orders, at least we have the cloud of the town saying, "This is not in code, make it in code." And as I told Mr. Kefory, I don't care who they tell, I don't care who they say enforce. You know, if they tell us, fine. If they tell Sutton Pond, fine. Part of this is getting the town to engage its police powers to say, "This is not right." Even though there is a litigated decision, the litigated decision is not like, you know, those old model boxes where you go step by step on how pump stations should be constructed. That's not what the arbitrator did. That's not what the court did. Okay? It is up to the design, the engineering professionals to say, "This is what meets code."
That's never been done.
Right. And it hasn't been done. I mean, it was done on their pump system, but it hasn't been done on ours.
But you just said there was a litigated decision.
Right. Saying, "This is, this is what needs to be done." But the arbitrator's not going to say, "First, you have to engineer it, then you have to design it, then you have to permit it." Because that's within the purview of the professionals. No, no judge is going to say that either. I mean, you go back to a court and say, does a judge, a judge is going to be pissed off to say, "Do we have to tell you this is what you have to do?"
Does that satisfy your questions?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay. I'll entertain a closure.
I make a motion to close the hearing.
Second, Madam Chair.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I mean, that's closed. And I'll entertain a motion about, not, uh, not to enforce. I think this is it. Is this what you filed, August 3rd? Is that, um...
Yeah.
Going to be read?
I can't.
I think it was either August 3rd or...
September or August. I think it was September 9th.
Appeal decision not to enforce, that, that, is that what you filed with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So I am reading regarding, "An appeal of decision not to enforce a letter of authorization, sewer pump station located..."
I don't think, no, you're, you're going to do a fine if you're, you're entertaining so we can vote on it. Is that, not just to read it?
Okay. I am going to entertain a motion on the appeal of a decision not to enforce the letter of authorization, sewer pump station located at 146 Main Street, North Andover.
For finding to, for the applicant.
For finding for the applicant.
Anyone want to add to that?
So let's just clarify it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Okay, so, so by allowing this motion, we are accepting his appeal and going against the building inspector.
Actually, you would put it in a way of we're going for his appeal and, and requiring the building inspector to enforce.
So a yes vote is for him and against the building inspector.
It's not again, it's not for and against, Alan.
Okay. All right. Well, that's the way I see it.
Okay.
Okay. So then, everything is done in the affirmative, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And that's why we don't do for and against.
Okay.
Everything's positive.
All right. So, somebody has the second, ninth thing, right?
Did anyone want to, need more clarification or add to that or have questions on that?
So a yes vote is to accept his appeal.
I see those wheels turning.
Well, I'm, I'm struggling with the decision. I'm, I'm kind of in the discussion mode right now, but it's only, it's only internal. It's a one-person discussion.
Okay. So can anyone second that? Anyone? It's not one. Please. Go ahead. Second it so we can get it going. I cannot ask yet.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Okay. All those in favor of Alan's motion? All those against?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye? Denny?
Aye.
So unanimous, everyone against, um, this decision. I wish you guys luck. Sorry about that. You know, I wish it gets fixed and...
Well, I mean, we have a decision, which is what we went for.
That was unanimous, Mr. Speaker?
It was unanimous. Good luck.
Thank you.
I hope it gets all worked out.
Well, it's only been forever. We don't get any enforcement directly from, you know...
When there is a judgment, Kenny says you have to do a design, a permit. It doesn't get done.
I understand, I understand your frustration. Good luck.
But it's just not this board's...
Yes. Authorization.
So essentially, in any kind of future disagreement on behalf of somebody by filing a lawsuit, he won't do it.
That's absolutely not true. It's a case by case. All right, thank you. We actually have another case coming up, and good luck to you. Okay? This is us. I have, I set aside mine.
So, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Instead of going, I'll go yea or nay. Is that what they teach you in Paul, in law school? Paul, yea or nay?
We actually still continue our public hearing. Excuse me.
Excuse me.
Excuse me. We still actually have another applicant here. We do have a new public hearing on our docket. Can you read it, please?
Yeah.
Okay.
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at the Town Hall, 120 Main Street, North Andover, Massachusetts on Tuesday, November 10th at 7:30 PM to all parties interested in the petition of John Bartlett for property located at 101 Prescott Street, which is map 82, Lot 2. Petitioners requesting a variance from Table 2 of the zoning bylaws, the dimensional requirements for one-side setback left. The applicant is requesting an addition of a two-car garage and a master bedroom in the R4 zoning district. The variance proposed is 7.6 feet on the left side. The required is 15 feet. Application supporting materials are available for review at the Office of the Zoning Department located at 1600 Osgood Street, 2035, North Andover, Mass., Monday through Friday during regular business hours by order of the Board of Appeals. Albert P. Manzi III, Esquire, Chairman.
Okay, uh, who's actually here to present this? You actually have to come up to the podium, and you can present, state your name, and address for the record, please. Up there, yep?
No, sure. I'm John Bartlett, the petitioner.
That, no, you have to, you have to present it now. You want to tell us what you want to do and why you want to do this and...
As stated and read better than I could read it right out of the, the public notice, we have a small house on a large odd-shaped lot. And we simply want to add two garages to it, and once we have that footprint, we say, "Okay, we have three small bedrooms upstairs, let's turn it into one large bedroom with two others." It still would be a three-bedroom home. Basically takes it from a 1,400-square-foot house to a 2,000-square-foot square house. Still, still rather small. And, but in order to do that, we have to go six inches closer to the boundary on that side that we currently have a foundation. There's an old existing, talk about timing, excuse me. Sorry about that. I sat here for the last hour and it didn't ring. The current existing foundation for a now rusting steel garage that's still there is six inches farther away from the property line than what we're proposing. So it really doesn't affect anything, and all of our butters, immediate butters, left and right and across the street, have supplied you with letters of support, if you will, that it's fine with them. And the people to the left and right of us both have large structures.
Just making sure.
Uh, yeah. Yeah, that, that don't comply either. I mean, it's, if you look at the plot plan, it's, it's 100-foot frontage, but then the land goes this way from the straight on. So when you have to face the road, all of a sudden, you know, you go 50 feet and you start, and you go any depth and you start violating an offset. So we're not trying to do anything extraordinary. It's, it's quite ordinary for the neighborhood, and, and virtually all the properties around us in some way, shape, or form do the same thing.
So you're actually going to remove the garage that's there?
Mm-hmm. Okay. That's a 40s vintage steel structure that's still sound, but getting pretty rusty.
Did I understand these, the letters in the file and support are from 111 Prescott Street? Looks like the Fargos and 93 Prescott Street. Are those the butters on either side?
Yes.
Those your immediate neighbors?
Mm-hmm. Yes, they are. Yeah, the, the three in there are, are left a butter, right a butter, and immediately across the street from us.
Sounds like a good plan.
Yeah.
Looks good.
Certainly can't argue with those endorsements, particularly Mr. Fargos. Looks good. With, with a slammer right there.
Carol, sounds like a good plan. Okay. So those are entered into the record from the comments from the, um, the three butters. 92 Prescott, 111 Prescott, and 93 Prescott. Which is...
To the extent of help, Madam Chair, based on the, the record before me and the presentation by the applicant, I don't have any questions.
I'm actually, I'll say you have a funky-shaped lot, so that qualifies for shape of a...
Those were indeed the magic words, Madam Chair.
Yep. Funky-shaped? I don't think you referred to what is that, odd-shaped? I think you did.
It's hard to argue with a trapezoid on a 70-degree angle.
I must have missed that algebra class.
It was just so long ago.
And I went to North Andover High, not even Lawrence High.
Well, then, Lawrence High, eh?
Hearing other comments, Madam Chair?